All right, now we have nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock, so I'll call the meeting in the morning. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming this morning. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Petroselli.
Present.
Councilman Torincella?
Present.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Present.
I assume that the minutes of last meeting are not completed yet. We'll defer them to the next meeting. Reports of all officers and committees.
Looking, I wanted to bring the council up to speed on. We've talked a little bit about the church and the heating system and the question about the electricity. Dave and I did a little research on it and learned that, or understood that the electric is actually being done by the town to bring the main column down to the heating system. And then the contractor will be responsible for the load, souvenir for the system itself. So we're going to move forward with bringing it in and then get a date that we can start the process with just the boiler system.
Would you want to mention now the award we got from President, yet into the one we have, McDonald coming in?
Absolutely. So the mayor and I met with Senator Presley, and we put in for about $400, a little over $400,000 worth of rate request, the SAMS, which is the state facilities grant. And we put in for windows, we put in for the tractor, we put in for the heating system. We were fortunate enough to get $312,000 from Senator Presley's office, which we haven't received in many, many years.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so that's going to allow us, it's $187,000 for windows, and then it's $127,000 for heating system. So we're going to get moving on that. I don't know if we need a resolution to accept that money. I know we applied, but we're not detailing it at the minute. And then with the SAMS grant that we had from Senator McDonald, that's been sitting there for a couple of years, it was 2017.
You mentioned that when I saw it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's $135,000. And part of this is going to be, we met with Chazen, the mayor and I met with Chazen, and they're going to do a parking inventory to have a plan as to what we need for all the parks. That's roughly $9,000, that'll be out of that. And then we're also working at the, oh my gosh, what's the second one, Charles, it's the dog park. We're going to use the dog park for that, for the fencing, for the design, but it has to be like, so we'll start to get that one before we go.
By just a point, I saw the photos of the dome.
Oh, yes.
And it's just such an improvement on the dome.
Huge.
Again, that didn't cost, I don't know how much, I don't want to say money, but I mean, that was just kind of our workers.
Labor-intensive.
Hard work, labor-intensive, moving things around. And it just, the difference is unbelievable.
The walls, the floor looks awesome.
Floor looks great.
It just looks very new.
Walls are great, it's just clean. So, I know the mayor was just driving force on that, and he must have been quite involved with the city, so it really looks a lot better. It's just, it's a signature when you see people walking in, you're like, lucky. It's just clear.
I'm reopening with all that, you know.
Driving force was really, is really the employee. You know how diplomatic we are. And one other item we wanted to do too, one other item we wanted to do too is the coronavirus meetings we had yesterday. We did have a meeting at the senior centers yesterday, the mayor talked to people, and they got the second one and the third one we had, the fire department, I know, back to when we got those. So just kind of brought them into, up to speed as to what's going on from the CDC, and what we're hearing, and what we're planning to do. I know Mark, Amanda, Dave and I, we're all talking about if we get to a point where we have to work off-site, we would, or a virtual network, or we can actually get our people to dial in and do some of that way. So we're trying to be as honest as we can, with the equipment we have and the knowledge that we have. And like you say, we saw the signs.
Yes.
We have some of the, you know, something in place. We've been trying to do more in the area of education and disinformation, because it seemed to be even the topic at the meetings themselves, you know, thank you for letting us know, even though it's been on the news, and it's basically just a reiteration of the same, you know, same tips, so to speak, it's just that they're glad somebody else is involved in it as well.
So we're going to start detailing any expenses that might have come out of this, such as the surfaces that we bought, any materials that we bought here as well for ant sanitation. We'll start to detail those, and hopefully if there is capability to get refunded, some of that will certainly apply there.
So, Councilman Torincella's comments are really a good segue. What I've handed you is the updated draft rental agreement for the dome. It's expanded quite a bit. A lot of that is based on the requirements that were voiced by our insurance agency to make sure that any groups that were using the dome had the limit of liability insurance required. So that actually increased from a $500,000 policy to a $1 million policy that's required for the use of the dome. Also attached is a concussion protocol, as well as a youth sports molestation policy that will also be required for acknowledgement prior to the rental of the dome. One of the things that I've been struggling with is the fees. Obviously, we've endured some expense to get to where we are with the dome. There's additional work that needs to be done for floors, the bathrooms, things like that. And I don't know that we're necessarily in a position where we can just give free rentals for the dome anymore. We have an attendant that has to be there all the time, we have costs that we need to cover. So, you know, it's been a pretty unpopular stance of mind saying that we need to charge everybody, but I've really struggled to find a way to come to an agreement with everybody. One of the ideas that we had was maybe each group volunteers some time, and for each hour that they rent the dome, they volunteer an hour. But we had some significant pushback on that as well. So, having that in mind, I think we're really in a situation where we charge a lesser fee for city water-related groups and nonprofits, and for any profit-making ventures and any non-city athletic rentals, we charge $100 an hour.
There's never any non, there's never any other than nonprofits, aren't there?
Well, JJ Cycle would be an example of that. He presented us his.
We got the wrestling, the wrestling group.
Yeah, I think he's for profit, but he doesn't make a profit, so he would be a more, well, a profit that's a nonprofit.
We're talking about.
But, there's also a trigger in there for security services from the police as well, based on dependents and the introduction of alcohol to any events that are there. So we're trying to safeguard ourselves from a liability standpoint, but also from an operational expense standpoint, to make sure that, you know, we have funds.
I haven't looked through this insurance, but are they going to allow alcohol on the premises?
There would be additional forms that need to be filled out in order for us to do that. They haven't said no, but they need to make sure that we safeguard ourselves and obviously safeguard them in the process.
I actually thought your idea of, you know, some of these organizations, city organizations donating time with different functions to offset the costs, I thought that was awesome.
Yeah. I think the concern is, and I get it to a certain extent, that they already donate their time to coach the team, and now we're asking them to donate the time on top of the time they spend coaching the team. Which, again, I get, but I think to a certain extent, and I understand, you know, the financial difficulties that some of these families are going through, but at one point, do we say, okay, well, maybe you have to fundraise in order to do this, you know? If you're not willing to volunteer, then really the only other option that you have is, you know, Water of Leap does tagging, Water of Leap does tagging. There's a million fundraisers that are going on in communities now, especially with the weather turning nice. You know, unfortunately, I think we're in a position that we have to kind of take a hard stance on this, and, you know, this is what it's going to be moving forward. And that includes the high school, you know, the high school ones, the girls softball team, the boys baseball teams. I think we need to make it consistent all the way through.
One of the things we did up in North Colony is each team is responsible for a clean day at a given time. So we have multiple people that are using the facility, we could make monthly, bi-weekly, whatever that may be, if we could look at that.
Yeah, I think the issue was that when they walked right away with the volunteer time, it didn't really, they didn't care about the schedule or anything like that. We put a caveat on there that you had to volunteer within 60 days of the use. And the reason we did that is because we didn't want somebody using it in December, and then, you know, April, we're chasing them, saying, hey, you used the dome in December and you still haven't volunteered.
Right. But that's messy too, right?
Yeah, and, you know, keeping track of that, you know, is just, it's a logistical nightmare. And, you know, we've got one part-time attendant that's there, other than that, there's not really anybody else that's directly involved in the operation of the facility, so. So that's kind of where we are. You know, unless we find another funding stream or revenue stream somewhere that would help us endure the cost of operation, I really don't see any other way for us to raise the funds in order for us to not operate in a deficit situation. Again, there's a lot of internal conversations that will take place here, and as we get to more finalized documents, we're certainly, I probably should, but we wanted to give you a kind of an update as to what we have.
And I think we have a comprehensive group of the users, so to speak. I mean, like you mentioned, school, I know nobody from the schools on that list, I don't think they are, but they, you know, they might, they might be, that we had one meeting at the senior center, it was pretty, maybe about a third of the people that, you know, used it.
There were a lot.
Yeah, well, about a third of the ones that were asked to be there, you know, showed up, and so no input from some of the other groups. But maybe we, maybe we should come up with a little bit, have one more meeting to say, this is, you know, let's, you either go this way or this way, you know, you pick it, or you decide it, or whatever it is, or obviously we will. It's going to have to be something, I like to be, have something of mutual agreement, you know, that they're all going to buy into. I know, like I told you before, I went in there and kind of mentioned, hey, anybody want to help do the painting? And I got, like, daggers thrown at me. It's like, well, it wasn't, you know, they weren't interested in that part, I won't, I don't know, you know, it's one of those things you do try and do. Okay? All right. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move into old business.
Your honor, I don't believe we have any old business for this meeting.
And we'll move into new business.
New business, resolution number 9735. The Council of the City Ward of Leap hereby authorizes and approves the expenditure of up to $10,000 from the reserve of repairs, HRP, to be used for emergency repairs to the Water of Leap Civic Center Heating System.
May I make a motion that we move on the resolution?
I'll second it. Okay, a good discussion on that.
So this is in regards to a quote that we received from Stan's Combustion, who pretty much unilaterally works on the services at the Civic Center. This will, $9,080 will replace a broken condensate tank, the new condensate tank pipe that goes to the tank, and the damper motor, the damper spring motor that will be attached to the damper. What happened last time was, we had an issue where the damper motor, the damper doors stayed open, which allowed fresh cold air to go into the boiler system, froze the pipes. So we're going to a spring-loaded system, that way even if the motor fails, the damper will close. The issue with the condensate tank is the condensate tank actually recycles the water in the boiler and brings it back through again. We have a hole in the condensate tank, so it just leaks out all over the floor, requiring fresh water be entered into the boiler at a more consistent basis. So, we're at the point now where Bill has to go down and check the water level to make sure that there's an optimum level of water in the boiler in order for it to run successfully before he can even turn the boiler on. So, this will resolve those issues moving forward, and once we get the okay, we can get a P.O. and get Stan's in here to complete the work.
The one question that I have is, this is kind of like our.
Third emergency.
Boiler, or, I don't know, maybe it's a fourth, you know, we've had the senior center, we've had the fire department, now we've had work being done here at the city hall, now it's, now it's the Civic Center. You know, I mean, and again, just no reflection on, I mean, we haven't been here that long to be able to do it, but what I'm looking at is preventive maintenance and inspections. And I know we've got the filter plan, we've got this plan, we've got some others, some of them aren't as big, but even in, even in continuation, we still have the senior center, you know, who's looking at them, how often do we look at them, what, you know, what inspections do we make on them? I mean, I know, I don't know how often you go down to your basement and take a look at your boiler, but I think if you're down there and you're looking at it, and you see something dripping or something, looking at, you're looking at, and say, hey, we may have to do something on this, instead of waiting for that, you know, below zero night to say, oh, thank goodness, I mean, I better get it fixed.
Yeah, so, you know, we're hoping that part of this new work order system that we have in here is going to allow us to keep track of that preventive maintenance, to make sure it's done on a regular schedule. Already had conversations with Bill, Bill's way ahead of the game as far as getting people in here to work on it. I think years prior, it's always been a cost issue that, you know, he would ask if he could get it worked on, and there would be issues with time of year, funding expenses, things like that. So, you know, we've agreed to open up the dialogue, I told him, you know, we can't guarantee yes all the time, but, you know, if anything pops up, we need to at least get on the radar string. But from a regular maintenance standpoint, obviously, you know, based on, you know, what you're saying, it behooves us to have that.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Torincella?
Present.
Councilwoman Dunn?
In favor.
Mayor Petroselli?
In favor.
The next is resolution number 9736. The Council of the City Ward of Leap hereby confirms, ratifies, and approves the consulting and third-party administration combined services agreement between the City Ward of Leap and Jager &amp; Flynn Incorporated, with an address of 30 Corporate Drive, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. And further directs the city clerk to attach a test and seal of the city thereto, a copy which shall be attached hereto. And the Council of the City Ward of Leap hereby approves the consulting and third-party administration combined services addendum between the City Ward of Leap and Jager &amp; Flynn Incorporated, and further authorizes and directs Mayor Charles V. Petroselli to execute same, and the city clerk to attach a test, the seal of the city thereto, a copy of which shall be attached hereto. And the Council of the City Ward of Leap hereby approves the Humana Group sponsored Medicare Advantage Agreement between the City Ward of Leap and Humana, and further authorizes and directs Mayor Charles V. Petroselli to execute same.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we move on this resolution.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Lord, do you want to do the services, I'm not going to talk about the command?
Oh, sure. So, when Mark had requested that the Humana Group sponsored Medicare Advantage Agreement be placed on the agenda, I had requested that he reach out to Jager &amp; Flynn to see what, if any, agreements that we had with them, because they are a broker record. I had not recalled that this, that their services have been placed on the agenda at all, you know, either in 2019 or this year. So, Mark had emailed me their agreement, so I thought certainly it was appropriate to place it on the agenda to confirm, ratify, and approve our former director of finances' execution of the agreement back in November of 2019. So we have a resolution that certainly authorized, approved their services, although we've been utilizing them for the year 2020. So that's the first part of the resolution, and their consulting and third-party administration combined services agreement, and all the attachments were provided in an email that I sent out to the council. The second part of it, and I think Joe could touch on that, that is, I have it here, an addendum to the agreement that talks about, bear with me one second, I will.
HR assistance.
Right. The HR assist part of what they could provide the City Ward of Leap. It's called your human resources assistant service plan, which provides the City Ward of Leap with access to a number of HR support services, including Think HR Live. So that addendum was provided to Mark as a result of his request for the combined services agreement. So this is another product that Jager &amp; Flynn provides, could provide the City Ward of Leap.
That gives, that gives our employees the ability to go through the portal system, so they can go and see what they need to do, control their employee services. It's kind of like an assistance with an onboarding component, that they got someone to talk to, walk them through health benefits and many things that they need to do. So again, it gives that extra person that does this day-to-day, can answer questions right away for us.
And then finally would be the, the Humana Services for our Medicare retirees. This would be a change in the health insurance benefits from Blue Shield in northeastern New York to the Humana contract. As they presented in the council meeting on Thursday, there's no in-network doctors, which I believe will be a huge benefit to the Medicare population. No need to pick and choose the provider that you go to, because the in-network benefits and the out-of-network benefits are identical. There is no copays, with the exception of prescription drugs, and the prescription drugs actually cover more drugs than we cover right now, at significantly lower copays. One of the things that I'm very sensitive with, because I've been, you know, part of the general population here with benefits changing, and traditionally, we don't do this well. We don't educate our subscriber base, we don't stay in contact with the unions, we don't stay in contact with our population. So part of the agreement that we have with Jager &amp; Flynn is that they will do benefit conferences here at the senior center for the Medicare population. They've also agreed to do webinars for the population that are in the south right now, are snowbirds that won't be back here in time, so they'll be educated as to the benefits that they will have through the Humana plan. It's considerable savings for the city, but I think it's a very valuable plan. The first thing they sent to us when they came in is why do you have this insurance for your Medicare retirees? It was the first thing they saw when they came through the door. So, that made it pretty obvious to us that we probably didn't shop around, or at least our previous broker didn't shop around as much as we should have. And these guys, Jager &amp; Flynn has been invaluable to us, not only from giving us our options, but keeping us on task. There's a lot of things that are on our desk on a daily basis, and they call us and they say, hey, remember, this is the date that we're working under, and keep us on task. And a lot of that is the reason for us to have this special meeting now, because when I made communication with Pam and Jen last week, this was something that had kind of fallen off, and we wanted to get it back on so we can have that May 1 start date. And a big component of that is the educational process through the month of April, to make sure that the Medicare population is kept up to speed as to what the changes are going to be and how it's going to affect them. So, you know, I think Jager &amp; Flynn has done, you know, yeoman's work from 1-1, moving us forward, not only with this, but with our, our health benefit cards, and the limitation of the administrative duties that we now have to do for coworkers. They've been a great asset to us, and we look forward to working with them in the future.
I'm very pleased with them, I think. Seems like they're right on target. Even looking, trying to find something wrong with them is, is hard to, you know, to come up with. They've been really right out there, so I appreciate it.
You keep looking.
Yes.
When the schedule was set up for the international meetings, could, could you like CCS or whatever? I'd love to.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it would be a benefit for us, either myself, or Joe, or even the mayor at Tennessee as well. I think we've always allowed the insurance companies to come in to get their benefit, but really hasn't been a face of the city there. And I think it would benefit everybody to give a face of the city, to let them know that we stand behind the product, and we're not trying to pull something over on anybody.
The educational piece is huge.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
Oh, the insurance is that we're not trying to pull, pull something and take something away. Now that, you know, even saying we're, we're retired, you know, I mean, it's important to have that kind of, you know, trust.
Yes.
Will they be able to teleconference people?
Yes. They don't want to teleconference while they're having an in-person meeting, they want to set up a separate teleconference, but the option will be there. That's a good point, though.
All right. Call the roll.
Councilman Torincella? Present. Councilwoman Dunn?
In favor.
Mayor Petroselli?
In favor.
Resolution number 9737. Mayor Charles V. Petroselli is hereby authorized and empowered to execute an upstate New York electrical vehicle charging station, electrical infrastructure application on behalf of the City Ward of Leap. And Mayor Charles V. Petroselli is hereby authorized and designated as the representative of the City Ward of Leap to act as such in connection with the application, and to provide additional information as may be required, including all understanding and assurances contained in the application.
Next page.
And to the extent of, and to extent all and any hereby authorized have been executed and are performed by the mayor, all are hereby ratified and confirmed.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move on the resolution.
I'll second that. This is part of the clean community components, you know, post along with the solar, and you know, all the alternative uses for cars, for energy emissions. And I know the city right now, we're looking at five locations, the church, a couple of areas across the way here, along the 10th Street, and some other areas, that we haven't really finalized as of yet.
Get some guidance on that?
I'm sorry.
Do you get some guidance on that from, like, I mean, the organization or the state must give you some, some guidance about where's the most efficient way?
National Grid, pretty much. The application is going through National Grid. And so what National Grid looks at is basically the demand, you know, the, you know, the demand of it, and how, how it will be affected by it. They look at, is it going to be municipal where you'll have municipal vehicles, or is it going to be able to go for public? And they also do it by the number of potential, let's say, visitors or employees of the business that they have, so it would create. They're not, nothing's guaranteed as far as, well, five, four, or whatever, but they grant on the application.
One of the other things we learned yesterday, we met with Assemblyman Warner, and there's an alternative system, excuse me, that allows for our aerobic digester, that there may be a possibility to convert that for use, and convert it over for one of these systems there as well. We're doing a little bit more research there, but hopefully what we already have here and what we're using, we can maybe expand on it and make that through as well. So, it seems we were more than just back on that.
And the reason for placing it on the agenda now is that National Grid has got a very tight frame, timeframe for the application, and they weren't quite sure about the subsequent applications or any grants available. So they encouraged us to get it in now, and then to look at it. You can always change your minds or do whatever you want later on, but the, but it's, at least it's now. And as, as Joe mentioned, when we went yesterday, we went down to see someone, Warner, who's not a representative of ours, but of the northern country, Warren County, and she, it was almost like a, you know, a party for her. She seemed so excited that we were actually looking at this aerobic digester as a, you know, as a means of, you know, to do something in that, in that fashion, because it's something near and dear to her. So she gave us a lot of guidance on it, and, you know, and support. So I think it'll, got type help she's working with and so on, to try to at least make this a success, instead of, right now, we create a little component, release it off, let's harness it and try to use it for, whether it be heating source, or some type of energy source. Because the goal of mine is that if this thing isn't really close to be up and running by the fall, it's done. I just don't see the rationale, as, you know, somebody else is looking at it, the rationale of continuing something that's, I'll say, so much labor-intensive, but isn't producing any of the results that we need. It's been, how many years? Eight, you know, years. So it's, it's something that we either, either go forward on it or pull the plug. But we'll, we'll give it a shot and see how it goes. All right. Anything else? No, call the roll.
Councilman Torincella?
In favor.
Councilwoman Dunn?
In favor.
Mayor Petroselli?
In favor.
Your honor, that concludes the new business for today's meeting.
appropriate as an accountant, do you have anything?
I don't have anything at the moment.
The size for the, that you're planning on having something at the moment, or?
I will eventually have something.
We're into two months of the, of the year. Will we be able to get, let's see, the, sort of the, the balance?
Not right at this moment, but I have to submit the AUD, I believe, people first.
Okay. You'll be working on that?
Yeah.
Overall, budget-wise, for two months?
Where are we right at the moment? I didn't expect that for this meeting, truthfully.
Just a guess.
I am unaware of any major issues. There is something, the pump station on Whistle Ave is something a little bit concerning power-wise to me. I'm not sure that we fully budgeted for that cost, but it's the only thing I can currently think of that. think of that.
And as we're meeting with the police who has the most overtime, as you know?
Yes.
There's been, I don't want to say there's been a shift in methodology or understanding, but I know we're, we're looking at that a lot harder than we've been in the years past. You and I also had a meeting with, with the chief to kind of understand where that, you know, is going in the future. Amanda and I meet weekly, you know, on the budget. We haven't really seen anything alarming at this point in time. We are continuing to monitor, you know, day-to-day operations with it, you know, during those meetings, but there's nothing, I think, that seems out of the realm of where we are for day-to-day operations. It's the, it's the police that's the overtime that we started to try to just block down and helping them.
You will be getting an email to respond to. I have a couple of questions that I have.
April 1st is a good snapshot. That'll be a quarterly report, like a quarterly report and that'll give us, I think, right, a little, a good snapshot.
We also, you, you also receive the overtime reports, right?
I do. I haven't gotten one in a few months or so.
Really? Oh, okay, then, because I just, I just got them from Amanda. I didn't realize that they were not on them. But I'll make sure you get the last three or four that you have on them. But it's really important when you look at them, you know, because it's a, it does tell where some of the overtime is coming from, the need for it, where and how. So, you know, it's really, if you have any questions on it, you know, make, it's now's the time to kind of like look at them, this, you know, to see. I mean, I mean, I was saying that nothing's unjustified, but it's a, it's there and we have to kind of be careful on it.
Sure. Any ideas that installation of the paychecks component when it comes to that?
We were supposed to have a meeting on Friday with paychecks and Amanda and I sat in a virtual conference room for about 15 minutes before I gave up and emailed the gentleman we were supposed to have the meeting with and he said, he was working on something else. And I said, okay, let's set something up for next week and he never responded. So I will circle back with him regarding that. We had been looking at this payroll being the first one. Clearly, that did not happen. But yes, I will circle back with him.
You should, and also just to remember, I mean, it's, usually I get the overtime within a couple of days after the pay week. So if you notice that you didn't get anything in two weeks, I usually get one every two weeks.
It's usually Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday. I usually get it from Amanda Dela, she usually sends it, so you don't get it.
Dave, in regards to the paychecks, do we have that signed agreement?
Yes.
Okay. I've had the same kind of issues that Amanda's had with Bob Spilla, who's the sales manager for, in charge of our account. So I'll reach out to him again today to see where we are with that. You know, I can fax him a copy or scan him a copy.
Yeah, it hasn't been bound to them yet, but we could scan it and email it, whatever's the quickest way. We'd like to get it, try to remember if there's a provision for them to sign, but I have it in my office. I'll just, we'll go downstairs and we'll get a copy.
All right. If nothing further, I know we have a visitor, so if there's a public comment period that we, anything?
You're good.
Don't let snacks pass.
You're fine.
All right. I won't say no. All right, then, if nothing further, we'll let your motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Call the roll.
Councilman Torranceello?
In favor.
Councilwoman Dunn?
In favor.
Mayor Patricelli?
In favor.
Thank you. Thanks. Good day.